Come on, Christopher.
Hi.
Hello, Chris. We call the September 1st meeting of the Morristown City Council to order and welcome those of you who are with us today. We'll start with our invocation and place the flag. I'll call the council member Aher for that.
Goodness, pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to serve our community. Lord, we thank you for the blessings that you bestowed on our community, Lord. We ask again that you heal and comfort those that have been impacted by the COVID-19, Lord. Lord, we ask you to bless our efforts here today and that what we would do would be pleasing to you, Lord. Thank you. We love you and we thank you for your grace in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Al. And council members, let's check in. All present. We have, of course, the minutes of the August 18th meeting. If there are no corrections, I'd entertain a motion. They'd be accepted. So we have motion Aher. We have a second. All in favor say aye. Opposed, and those minutes are approved. We have one proclamation presentation. The proclamation actually was formally read and presented about an hour ago out front, but it's worth mentioning again, and this, of course, is the commemoration of the 100th anniversary of women's suffrage and the passing and the historical connection to the state of Tennessee and how that vote came through. And I got to read the proclamation, but I presented it to councilmember Senator Kate. Would you like to comment on it or have since it was for women's voting and opened up the voting and office holding duties for women? And since I believe you are one.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. The mayor presenting the proclamation today. And I'd just like to let you know who represented our community out front today, and it's a fine group of ladies who have set their goals high and have worked hard to achieve them. We also have on the left, we have some girls in the red from the Girls Inc., and on the right, we have in the blue, the other girls from the Boys and Girls Club Inc. over here. But representing today, the county commission is the Eileen Arndline. And I represent the city council. Alpha Alexander was the Eileen is in the green on the left, and Alpha is to my right, right there, sort of behind the young lady with the blue with the yellow book. Then you have Tanika Wathall, and Tanika is in the polka dots right there. Tanika happens to be a former student of mine. I won't tell you how far we go back, but we go back a long way. And she, I'm very proud of Tanika. She was Tanika Buley when she was in school, and she's the regional director for labor and workforce development. Janice Snyder, Judge Janice Snyder, is in the white jacket in the middle. She's the general sessions juvenile court judge for Hamlin County. And then we have Betsy. Betsy is to the right of the old lady with the yellow book. Betsy Vanilla Hurst is the executive director of Ola, and I just met Betsy. And then we have Lisa Bender on the left in the red with white pants. She is the executive director of Girls Inc. And with her in front is Rory. Rory is the Rory Stapleton is the daughter of Misty to the left, who is the program director at the Girls Inc. On the right, way over to the right, we have Penny Knight, and she is the family life coordinator, new position at the Boys and Girls Club Inc. And then in front of her is Samantha Morales in the white shirt. Samantha's brother Hugo Morales was the Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year this last year and was a first, he was a first alternate to being the main, the one for the state. Hugo, just as an aside, is now a freshman at ETSU. And Samantha, the younger sister, is just a fine young lady. To the young lady holding the blue book is Nadia James. And then back behind her in the, to the right back in the burgundy is Raella Roach, and those are members there. Incorporate as young ones because, as we talked about out there, and Gary gave a really good explanation of how suffrage came about, the importance that I told him, as I always tell my students, the one thing, and I would always tell, even before I was on city council, I always had, I said, the most important thing you could do is to register to vote and vote. That extends your voice, male or female, no matter. But that's the gift that keeps on giving as long as you use it, and the only person who can take it away from you is you by not using it. So it was a very good representation, I felt, of the community today and an opportunity to stop and acknowledge that and be sure that we do continue to exercise the right to vote. No number three early voting. And I suggest if you want to get an early ballot, you may have someone that needs one of those, an absentee ballot, and might apply for that early. Thank you, Mayor.
And I think also, of course, the story of the hero of the vote, Harry Byrne, who cast the vote among lots of pressures to vote otherwise. I think we have a council member who actually met Harry Byrne in person. Is that right, Mr. Peddige?
That's true.
So that's another connection for us. We open the floor now for comments that anybody may have, any citizen comments about any item that is on the agenda. These are agenda items only. The exception are public hearings, and we have a number of those today. If you have comments about any of those items, we ask you wait until the public hearing portion. But if there are other items on the agenda you wish to address, floor is now open.
One second.
Okay, does somebody wants to speak? And we ask that comments be, you have three minutes to speak and identify yourself by name and address. The floor is open.
My name is Londonowey, 2343 Joe Stephens Road. I would like to talk essentially about everything on your agenda. I'd like to ask that you take your meetings and put them out for the public. We've gone through this. You know, these meetings are essentially, you may call them open meetings, they're essentially closed. I get here and I'm told, well, if we've got enough space. And then I look in here and every city employee is here, and that's not bad. But what about the public? What about the public? Not every city employee is needed to be in here. What you have is some annexation issues, a contract or two, and that's pretty much it. Either let the public in, hold it in a bigger room if you need to, but let the public in and take your meeting and put it on a YouTube channel. I've mentioned before, and I saw some of you writing down Carter County, Loudon County. You know, we think we're so wonderful, and we talk about how, oh, we're the envy of everybody, and we're so way ahead of everybody, and we're a gig city. And we can't even take a city council meeting and put it out for the public? And it's not that we can't, it's that we want. And that's even worse. All these items, all these public hearings, all these annexations, all these studies and so forth and contracts. Take your meetings. It's not hard. Have MUS do it. Well, I say that, MUS won't even take their own meetings. Our great gig, MUS. Thank you.
You will, Al. Or Lori or Steve, is there anyone else out there who wishes to speak? Assuming none, we'll close this portion of the meeting and go to those public hearings. We have several today. The first of which is where ordinance 3656 entitled an ordinance to close the vacate certain rights away within the city of Morristown, Esco Way Public Rightway and the portion of Allison Street Public Rightway, the intersection of West Third and Fourth Street. The floor is now open.
Yes, sir, Mayor. So Hamlin County government's requested the rightway abandonment of the two rights ways just mentioned, Esco Way and Allison Street north of the West Fairmore Street. The reason for this request is due to the proposed new justice center that would be built on this location. According to the mayor and our preliminary plan we've seen, Esco Way would be utilized as a gated private entrance to the justice center. And then Allison Street to the west will be part of the parking lot on the side of the justice center. Staff recommends approval of these two rightway abandonment requests, and I should note, planning commission did vote to support this request at their last meeting.
Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? If not, is there a motion that we will close the public hearing? Is there a motion from the council to adopt? So the motion Smith, we have a second. The council members have any comments on this one?
Yes, Mayor, we're closing. They'll still be used as thoroughfares within the compound.
Um, sorry. So Esco Way will be used, I mean, they're going to utilize that to, as a private drive to get to the back portion of the justice center. Then Allison Way, that and the neighboring property will be converted into the drive and the parking lot to serve this area. So they'll be closed to public use unless you're there for official justice interviews.
Okay. So Esco Way will be taken off the 911 list and will not be responding.
Yes, Mayor. Yes.
Thank you.
We have comments. We're ready to vote. Let's vote. That ordinance is adopted. The next public hearing we have is on the adoption of a plan of services under the resolution 7-21. This resolution adopts a plan of services for the annexation of properties located between Highway 25E and Morlock Road. The, this was approved under the resolution last time. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this item? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'll undertake a motion for this plan of services to be adopted. Don't move. Motion peddled. And we have a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's vote. And that is adopted. Next is ordinance 3657. This entitled an ordinance to annex certain territory and incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Morristown for the annexation of properties located between Highway 25E and Morlock Road, having the Hamlin County tax parcel ID numbers you see before you, with the zoning designation of intermediate business or IB. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this? Josh, you're first.
Yes, sir. So this is the annexation of West Esco was a plan of services, and this is where two parcels within the urban growth boundary, and I know you kind of did a good job saying where it's at, but these two are currently landlocked but located just east of Highway 25E, north of Spring Creek Apartments, and west of Morlock Road. These parcels are currently vacant, contain a little bit over four and a half acres, and the applicant's requesting it be zoned IB or intermediate business district. This request is in conjunction with the rezoning request. That is, I think, next upon council's agenda. The applicant has stated they are wanting to utilize these free parcels in this location for a boat and RV storage facility. Staff recommends approval of this request. As an accession request, the zoning district of intermediate business and planning commission voting to support this request also.
Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'll undertake a motion for this ordinance to be adopted.
Move for approval.
Motion centered. Does the council have any questions about this one?
I'm sure this comes in site preparation, screening from adjacent properties and things like that.
Um, yes. Per our zoning ordinance, any residential use or district, it will have to be screened against with appropriate manner such as neighboring water trees.
Any other comments? Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. And that motion carries. Our next public hearing is on ordinance number 3658 entitled an ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city of Morristown Appendix D. Just rezones the Hamlin County tax parcel number you see before you from R2 to IB. Now, floor is now open.
Yes, sir. So this request, as I know, is in conjunction with annexation request that was just voted on. Other parcel isn't within the city limits and just east of the two previous parcels. So you just looked at. And as I just stated, you know, the applicant is wishing to utilize this location for a boat and RV storage facility, which is a permitted use in the intermediate business district, but not in current zoning district of R2, which is our medium density residential. This property is vacant, also contains roughly 2.25 acres. 25E to the west, vacant armland, pretty much every other direction. Per T-GOT the daily traffic counts near this parcel is greater than 25,000 in 2018. So this doesn't make it suitable for strictly residential development. Additionally, this rezoning request, the IB is consistent with the city's future land use plan. So given these two reasons, staff recommends approval of this request, and once again, planning commission did vote in support of this request.
Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address this issue for this ordinance? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'll undertake a motion that this ordinance be adopted. So motion Aher. And we have a second. Any questions or comments by the council? Hearing none, let's vote. That motion carries. Next is ordinance 3659 entitled an ordinance to amend municipal code of the city of Morristown Appendix B to rezon from IB to R2, a portion of property located just south of Economy Inn on South Cumberland Street of Morristown. The floor is now open.
Uh, yes, sir, Mayor. Property owner Jameson Pack wishes to develop this property located along South Cumberland, just past Economy Inn into an acre, 27 lot, single pound subdivision. To accomplish that, he needs to have the entire parcel zoned R2. The entrance along the property, which is done with commercial, you can see it there, just on the east side of Cumberland there. Um, that's the portion that Mr. Pack is wishing to have rezoned R2, so he can utilize the entire piece of property. At the last planning commission, they all voted to for this request on city council for approval.
Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address this item? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'll undertake a motion that this ordinance be adopted. So move. Motion Smith, we have a second. We do have a second. Any comments from the council?
You were, you were telling us that you had looked into something we asked you to about this site last time.
Yes, ma'am. I forgot all that. In the last council meeting, Ms. Senator and Mayor had asked that we look at stormwater department and the engineer, record for this development, and myself and Steve has had some input on it. We're trying to research ways, possible ways in which to perhaps reroute some water in that entire area around Nettie Circle. Not sure we can do much, but we're all putting our hands together. Maybe we can come up with something.
Is that something that if we don't find a proper way, that might inadvertently put more water down there that would result in a lawsuit against either the developer or the city for not taking action?
But we can't allow water to go from one development to another, so it has to be contained. So it will either be a retention pond or additional culvert or something.
And they do on their concept for this project, they do have a retention pond showing on.
And I just, I think, you know, we see what happened with the colonies. We just don't need to repeat that.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. And that ordinance is adopted. And finally, the public hearing on ordinance number 3660 entitled an ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city of Morristown Appendix B to rezon from R2 to IB to include the whole of lots nine through 11, as shown on the Panther Village subdivision plant, along with that property located in the southeast intersection of West Andrew Johnson Highway and Shady Woods Road, which adjoins Shady Woods subdivision lot 41. The floor is now open. Lori?
Yes, sir. This request comes from the Koch family. They have requested rezoning two of their properties located along West Andrew Johnson Highway. Both properties are currently zoned R2 or residential. They are asking that they be, both of the properties be rezoned to intermediate business in order to expand an existing mini storage warehouse facility. One lot is at the northeast intersection of West AJ and Shady Woods. The other is just off of West AJ along Pander Drive. There being the existing warehouse on that lot. The planning commission again voted to for this request on city council for approval at their last meeting.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address this item? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing, and I'll undertake a motion for this ordinance to be adopted. Motion Aher. And we have a second. Any questions or comments from the council?
Yes. Can you bring that last picture back up? I asked, of course, at the last time, you said they're redoing this to do a mini storage?
Yes, sir.
There's a mini storage right there now. We're doing away with that?
No, I think the plan is, and this isn't written in stone, the plan is to re renovate the two existing buildings here and expand them. They own this property too that's already done with commercial and expand this business up here and this property as well. This property and this property are both.
If I'm not mistaken, the lower one right there, it's already been awarded the bid to tear those down.
Now, I have heard that. I do know that they or someone is going to be tearing down the trailer, considering along with the stage there.
I would check on it right there. It's really close because it's not being operated. I know several people that have stuff in there, and they had to basically get rid of all their stuff. And I'm not sure that property right there is reusable.
Well, they'll have to submit a site plan regardless of what they, they turn in. I have heard that they'll shred.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, it's, it's, it's already been awarded to demolish and remove that. But I could be wrong. I stand with their threat.
Any other comments? Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. And that ordinance is adopted. That concludes our public hearings. Under the new business items, we do have one resolution, being number 8-21. This being a resolution of the city of Morristown approving the civil service board's amendments with its public safety qualifications and standards for entry level and promotion. These known as the green and orange books. Council will recall in our last work session that the civil service board presented a number of adjustments to the rules and regulations. Mr. Parker is here if you have any questions, but it comes to you as a recommendation from civil service. Do we have a motion to that recommendation? Motion. Motion Vivance. And we have a second. We have a second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Tony said Mr. Parker is here. He's the chair of the civil service board. If there are questions. Hearing none, are we ready to vote? Let's vote. And that motion carries. Next, we have five awards in the bids and contracts, first of which is an interlocal agreement between the city and Hamlin County related to the 2020 Byrne Justice Assistance Grant or JAG program award.
Council may have a call for a number of years. We've received this grant many years ago. We shared the proceeds of the grant between the city and the county and tried to do joint purchasing projects. After seeing that that kind of diluted our ability to do what we, we needed to do for the police department and the sheriff's department, and an agreement was put in place where we would alternate years, where the city would take one year and the county would take another year. This year, it's the county's turn disagreement to simply acknowledge that your foregoing, your application for this, this current period.
Do we have a motion to adopt this recommendation? Motion centered. We have a second. We do have a second. Any questions or comments? Let's vote. And that is approved. Next is the acceptance of the grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation at the amount of $86,500 for a land acquisition taxiway relocation study at the Morristown Regional Airport.
These funds will allow us to conduct a study to extend the taxiway, will eventually allow us to add additional hangers to the airport. That, of course, will allow us to house original aircraft and enhance the overall use of our facility. This is 100% money from T-GOT. We recommend approval.
Is there a motion for that recommendation? Move. Motion Aher. We have a second. We have a second. Any questions? Hearing none, let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the approval of a bid for plastic recycle and refuse containers and award the best and lowest bid to IPL Plastics, Inc.
This is a new vendor for our garbage containers, but the references checked out is very positive. The price is very attractive. In fact, it's so much lower than the next bid. We are able to get 800 additional cans, which is basically one route. We would recommend approval.
Do we have a motion for that recommendation? Motion Vivance. We have a second. We do have a second. Any comments?
County D-SC with the new automated machines as well.
Yeah, we've tested, and they are flexible size. They should handle the new trucks very well, and we think it'll work.
So we're hugging instead of.
Yeah, we're hugging. Yes.
Any other comments? Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the approval of the purchase of a 2020 Ford Ranger pickup truck from Public Works Department via state contract 209.
This is a budgeted item. It is for the replacement of an existing truck driven by Mr. Young. His, his truck will be transferred to the mosquito spraying program, and that truck will be moved to service. It is a budgeted item. It is state contract. We recommend approval.
Is there a motion to that recommendation? Motion centered. And we have a second. Any questions or comments? Glad Mitch will get the new truck. Hearing none, let's vote. And that motion carries. And finally, a motion is called the Hallelujah Brother Better Late Than Never, the approval of a bid subject to the Tennessee Department of Transportation concurrence for the West Andrew Johnson Highway Rehab Project, an award to Summers and Taylor Construction in the amount of $844,870.66 for the paving from North Fairmont to West Morris at Walters.
Yeah, we discussed this project at the mini retreat on Friday. This is a bid subject to the approval from T-GOT. They are still reviewing it. We hope they do approve it. It's a good bid. We definitely concur with the recommendation to approve the bid.
Is there a motion to that recommendation? Move. Motion Aher. Do we have a second? Would we have a second? Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, let's vote.
We need a second.
Get it? Let's vote. And that person carries. We come to the city administrator's floor.
I'll try and leave brief, but I did want to, as I indicated in the last agenda, I know, we had a couple of meetings at Walter State here over the last month. I wanted to reach out and thank Walter State and Dr. Mixa for the use of their facilities. They were very accommodating, and I think it was a good location for our meeting and discussion. And given the complications with COVID, trying to deal with distancing and masks and so forth, they very much worked with us, and we want to reach out and say thank you again. they very much worked with us and we want to reach out and say thank you again. Remind council that our local paving program for this fiscal year is underway. There are Summers Taylor's trucks out paving streets even today. So our, our local paving program continues. And then finally, a housekeeping item. After the conclusion of the meeting, we will have a brief workshop to give an update and report on our rebranding effort. And that's our corporate debt.
Thank you, Tommy. This is the time we open the floor for comments and communications from the public on any item that you believe needs to come to the attention of the city council. The floor is now open. Please introduce yourself by name and address. You have three minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Come on.
Yes, I walked all the way over from the other room. Same thing. Tape these meetings. You can't, you can barely hear over there. And Mayor, you can hear really well over there. I guess it's the announcer in you, or maybe your microphone's better than everybody else. But it's very difficult to hear over there. You had to crank it way up. You could hear it some, and then you had to crank it down when the mayor was speaking. Tape your meetings. There are people, you, you've seen them here. People in wheelchairs, people who have difficulty just simply walking, much less coming to a meeting. People who work, people who have other obligations. I mean, they, they have the capability, they're in there showing the meeting over and out of the room. Why don't you simply take that tape? Put it on your YouTube channel. You show us how you're doing different things that the city's doing on your website. Show us your meetings. It's really odd that some of you really want to do this, but it doesn't get done. I'd like to see a vote. I'd like to see which one of you, which ones of you are open, accountable, willing to let the public see the public business? And not just during COVID, during any time. Put on the big boy pants and put it on tape. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to be heard? We close the floor to the public comments. And we open up for comments from mayor or council. And I'll, I'll open the floor for council members if you have anything you wish to say. Hearing none, we will remind each of us that we do have a work session briefly. If there are no other items to come before the council, I'll undertake a motion we adjourn.
Come in.
We are adjourned.
You have a few minutes, we'll cut out.